All this raising the meeting's order, say, wow, that's seven oh one.
On the car, here. On the role.
Here.
On the Johnson.
Yeah.
Oliver, Rosenberg.
Here.
I present your honor.
You. Starts with Oliver Mathoya's joining us. The motion to approve the house of minutes from March twenty eighth, twenty five, was unmotionable. Officer Oliver, second Oliver, question. But we did roll call.
Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Jenkins.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya. Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
There is public comments. As a reminder, a public comment period is not time for dialogue. The purpose of the public comment period is for the mayor and all of the city to receive input from their community. It is in fact a one-way communication for the city council. City's administration and department heads are available for discussions after the mayor. Is there any public comments?
Good evening, mayor, and also to our council. I'd like to acknowledge your reelections and congratulate you on your elections. And then also let you know, again, Ollie Clements representing Mission Covenant Church. I'm actually elated, I'm extremely excited. We're gonna have a re-night, renewed, remodeled, revived service on Sunday, scheduled for three o'clock PM at Mission Covenant Church, twenty-five oh one Collins Street. And we invite you to come out. I have not given you an invitation. I do have several this evening that I can give you, but we would welcome you to come, open arms. So in any case, if you can make it, please be there. We're extremely excited about this. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Not moving on, the mayor report. The motion to approve payroll dated March twenty eighth, twenty five, about four hundred fourteen thousand one ninety-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Is there motion? Officer Carr, say Oliver Mathoya, question. But we did roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya.
Aye.
Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
Motion carries, the D, motion to approve the accounts payable dated April ninth, twenty twenty five, by nine hundred seventy-one thousand, eighty hundred. An extradition, there are three and fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents. They're opening. Officer Carr, question. But we did roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya.
Aye.
Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
There is, the next two are relating to the same property. I will start the first one, resolution of the city of Illinois, the county of Illinois to authorize approval of settlement agreement relating to twenty twenty-three M six four two five one. Is there a motion? Officer Johnson, second Oliver Roll, under question. But we did roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya.
Aye.
Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
There is the D, the resolution of the city of Illinois, the county of Illinois to authorize approval of D at the real form closure agreement regarding number five four two, South Western Avenue. Is there a motion? Oliver Johnson, say Oliver, Rosenberg, under question. But we did roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya.
Aye.
Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
There is, only been twenty years. Will be on D, resolution of the city of Illinois, the county of Illinois to authorize a consent decree relating to twenty twenty-four CH seven six six three. It's time for the division. Is there a motion? Motion Oliver Roll, is second. Carr, under question. But we did roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya. Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
There is number F, resolution of the city of Illinois, the county of Illinois to authorize approval of intergovernmental agreement in the city and the board of education for county district authority regarding the transfer of tenants and property. Is there a motion? Motion Oliver, is second Oliver Roll, under question. But we did roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya.
Aye.
Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
There is, for G, a resolution of the city of Illinois, the county of Illinois to authorize approval of purchase and sale agreement for one nineteen forty-one through one nineteen fifty-five, South Central Avenue. Is there a motion? Oliver Johnson, second. Oliver Roll, under question. But we did roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya.
Aye.
Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
There is, thank you, the city council, for those several motions regarding property on South Western Avenue. It's been a burden for three administrations to the city that finally have some resolution regarding this property. Hopefully, once we take possession, seven days, we can market it effectively and put it back on the next rolls for first time. A year. Feel good about that. We should all feel good about that. I want to congratulate everybody in person again for winning the reelection on Tuesday nights, last Tuesday, and before it's another forty years of progress. City, quick.
Community cleanup is moving ahead. We have over two hundred volunteers. My pass is also moving ahead. Save the date, May tenth. Flower sale in New York and Western begins every Saturday in May, except for May tenth. TGIF and Old Western Harvest Park is still looking for craft vendors, starts in June. July fourth parade, we're signing up people now, so please don't forget to turn in your registration form. The Blue Island Park District has two events coming up. April eighteenth, it's Friday, it's the Flashlight Easter egg hunt. Eight o'clock at Memorial, don't miss out. And the Easter egg hunt is Saturday, April nineteenth at ten AM, Memorial Party. Those, don't miss out. Make sure to go up there and sign up ahead of time.
Thank you, city president.
I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the March twenty twenty-five treasurer's report.
Is there a motion? Oliver Roll, I think Oliver, Rosenberg, under question. But we did roll call.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Carr.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Mathoya.
Aye.
Oliver, Rosenberg.
Aye.
Besides your honor.
There is. Awesome.
Just congratulations to everybody.
City attorney?
Yep.
There's no, there's no executive. City administration?
Just a couple items for tonight. So last, last reminder slash warning on statements of economic interest with the county, with the county, if you haven't done so yet, can have it done by the end of this month. Otherwise, you could actually incur fines. If you haven't done it yet, as you're going through it, they made a few changes this year, not many, but a few. If you have any questions about what's constitution assets, things like that, feel free to give me a call. If you're having any trouble logging in, that's been another problem I've heard. We can work through that, or there, actually, this office is very responsive. The number they give you, they will pick up and walk you through it, so. As part of, obviously, congratulations to all the council and the mayor on reelection. April twenty-eighth, we're going to be having our inauguration, and that is, I figured, the absolute best chance to get everybody in the room well dressed. So we are going to be doing headshots for the day. That is also going to be part of our, I want to make sure our new website has, you know, good headshots for everyone. We're doing administrators too, so we're not just, you know. Everyone's getting the headshots, so just be prepared for that, that day, that is part of, as part of the inauguration celebration. I'll be tapping you on the shoulder at some points to go over the cover brown, get your headshot taken. And then I just, I mentioned the website, as you know, that you may have already seen, our new website went live last week. We did a little bit of a soft opening with it, and then this week we kind of announced to the community, so if you haven't yet, scroll through it. Give us whatever feedback. The light was, is still very much in the building phase. I'm gonna hand this over to Oliver and Roll in a minute, as well as he's been part of helping us implement this along with Kevin and Sarah Brown, who will be overseeing a lot of the day-to-day nuts and bolts, maintenance of the site moving forward. So I've asked all the departments to really do a deep dive into their individual departments, give us feedback on what they want to see changed. There's still plenty of work to do. As we talked about, we migrated a lot over, but there's still some of that clay still needs to be molded, but it looks pretty good, I think, in my opinion. So Oliver and Roll, if you want to posit even there.
Yeah, thank you. Personally, I think the website turned out fantastic. Civic Plus is newly hired to do the actual build. I think they did about as good as you can leading a digital project like that. I want to thank Brown Town Communications for not only doing the migration, but helping to lead it, and I think it's a good example for how the city and how the administration can sort of get the most from professional services, like impact. So I brought that one accidentally. And as a, as a personal point of pride, this does have our transparency portal. That's sort of our first version one point oh of making the city's financial data not just more transparent, but more accessible as an interactive report. It's free to the public. And that data flows directly from our financial system to the portal, so it's not something that is prepared in advance. So, you know, if you haven't, please do check that out and let me know what you think, what you like, but also what you'd like to see. It's just the start. So, yeah, thanks again to everyone involved. It's very pleased. Our digital infrastructure is just as important as much of our other infrastructure in the twenty-first century. So this is much needed.
That's all. I want to say thank you. Any other Oliver? Oliver, fair.
Yeah, well, yes, very happy to see the website come up great. Thank you so much, and I agree with Josh's big step forward. And, you know, we're all happy that we're reelected, and that was very good. Of course, you have to note that when no one's opposed, the turnout's pretty low. And kind of brings me to a point I'd like to say tonight, with the new website coming up, it's a really good step forward to making this more accessible to everyone. It's really important. And I'd like to see us follow fairly quickly with a couple of other things. To, partly to do with the city council meetings themselves. I'd like there to be, you know, we have a few stalwart attendees who are here almost every time, and that's about it. And I'd really like to see us find some ways to get a little more public engagement with what we're doing here. And I think there are a few barriers to that, but the website definitely a big step forward. That's very helpful. A couple of other barriers I'd like to see us bring down. One is my, to my, my most important constituent, my wife. She wants us to make the city council video something you actually can hear. She's tried it a wash a couple times, and just, it just unintelligible live, I don't know, it's like, on its way lately, but that is something we really need to work on. Because it, it just discouraged, I mean, I can't imagine anyone sitting around just wanting to watch us move on screen. And secondly, I would like to see us branch the agenda, or at least live when we're doing the you know, introducing anything that we're gonna go down, just a one sentence or maybe two sentence explanation of what the item is, so there's someone, someone's out there, they don't, or whatever, they don't know what we're talking about. And I think it would just be helpful for anyone, you know, tuning in from TV or out there to just kind of know what we're doing. So a couple of simple things, but, and I think they're probably relatively due, so I'd like to see us do those things. And we'll just keep moving forward, thank you.
There are all. Not, um, the motion, please, sir. Open roll, to all the council, I'll pay for say aye.
Aye.